Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 6 February 2023. Mr. Franciac, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please... Oh, Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougal's out of the country on business, has to be excused.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Mr. McDougal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the City Council will now enter into an executive session regarding potential litigation and a potential real estate transaction per RCW 4230-110. The length of the closed session will be approximately 30 minutes, after which council will return to council chambers. No action will be taken as part of the executive session. Thank you.
Okay, the city council has returned from executive session and will now re-enter the regular open meeting with agenda item four at six thirty-two P. M. Announcements and committee reports on item four. A couple announcements for me. The beams going in place on the trestle today or this week, fencing next week, decking hopefully the following week. So I'm optimistic about a March timeframe since I don't see John here to tell me he can't make that happen. So pretty exciting that we're making good progress there. Also going to, on the consent agenda, pull items C and D off the consent agenda. Got a couple of folks that have signed in to comment on that, so we'll take that up after the consent agenda. So next, announcements, committee reports, fiber committee report for A, fiber committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The fiber committee met, but we are scheduled to receive a fiber briefing in the future, so I think we'll leave it to that. I don't think we talked about any policy measures.
Okay.
Just to just an update.
Thanks. On to item four B, public works committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The public works committee met just prior to this meeting at five o'clock. It was council members Walters, Young, and myself and public work staff. And we talked about the thirty, the water transmission pipeline emergency repairs. That was a pipe that essentially got a leak in it and it's been welded and repaired. That is on our consent agenda. It was done at less, the price that was estimated, which was two hundred thousand dollars. So far it's cost fifty and we think that that's going to work, but we're holding back the money just in case. And we talked about a sinkhole that opened up over the new thirty-six inch raw water line. And that happened in the November twenty-twenty-one flood and that was a FEMA-eligible disaster. So that is being monitored. One, a couple of companies said that it looks good to them, but because staff wants everything to be as safe as possible, obviously, we're getting essentially a second opinion. And any costs associated with that will be reimbursable to ninety-five percent of the cost. And that may be true also of the repair I had mentioned just prior to that one. We talked about Kansas Avenue and there is a city right of way between West Second and West Fourth that staff is looking at to ultimately turn into a road where now it's just raw land. And we talked about concerns of potential speeding if that is opened up all the way from the top of the hill down to Oaks. We don't want that to become a speedway. So we talked about potential traffic calming measures and opening one block at a time, but that's still under investigation for what that will require regarding drainage and things like that. Our compost procurement ordinance required by state law will be on next week's council agenda. And that's about it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Next up is four C, housing affordability and community services committee. Mr. Walters.
Mayor Miller. The housing affordability and community services committee met, I guess, a couple of times since our last meeting. I think one of those was our visit to T Avenue and chatting with folks down there. We may have done that actually twice in that time period. And then at our last formal meeting, we looked at our housing action plan, which council recently adopted, and identified near-term measures that we would like to select from the plan and move forward. As y'all might recall, the plan has a lot of brainstormed ideas. Not all of them are necessarily suitable for ever moving forward. Some of them maybe are a longer-term conversation and some of them are more obvious. So we identified some that we feel like are more obvious and those include changing the Cs to Ps in some of the permitted use tables such that types of housing that is permitted in Anacortes, but with a more detailed process, a conditional use permit process, would be allowed by outright permitted use. We're talking duplexes, triplexes, those kinds of things in the R-two and R-three zone. We would keep the alley-loaded requirement as proposed in the plan. We would also make adaptations to the code to accommodate the recent changes in state law regarding emergency housing, shelter, anywhere we allow hotels and motels. And to allow and define single-room occupancy uses, define and permit single-room occupancy uses and provide for reduced fees for single-room occupancy uses. We would look at development of a multifamily tax exemption program, which is a tax program, not a development regulation, maybe a very small program, maybe a more encompassing program. The plan talks about a whole significant program, but some obvious provisions could be, for instance, to provide a tax exemption to the family center, which obtains a tax exemption anyway, but they have to apply for it every year. So we could do some streamlining through that program or we could expand it to incentivize additional low-income housing. And then also look at some regulation of short-term rentals in our commercial zones, including prohibition on use of six hundred square-foot residential units in the commercial zone as short-term rentals because they're supposed to be affordable housing and that's why the incentive is there in our code. And to look at a permanent prohibition on Airbnb's short-term rentals in the commercial zone and the MMU zone. And then finally, adaptations for tiny homes on church property, which is also required by state statute for us to address. So those are the types of things that we're going to try to formulate a proposal around so that we can move some of those things forward near term. And then other things in the plan, we'll talk about further in the future, but would either be a longer-term process or might not be pursued at all.
Okay, thanks. Any other committee reports I missed? Okay, next up is item four D, planning commission appointment. So it's my pleasure to present to council appointment of Jim Stoneman to the position previously held by Sarah Roeder. And appreciate the contribution that Sarah was able to give to the planning commission. But Mr. Stoneman will be filling the rest of that term until December of twenty-twenty-five. And Mr. Stoneman was nice enough to join us tonight. You can wave, there he is. And so I'm asking for council's confirmation to the planning commission.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve the appointment of Jim Stoneman to the planning commission.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to appoint Mr. Stoneman to the planning commission. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for willingness to volunteer on the planning commission. We pay you in paper clips typically. And thank you to Sarah for her time serving the planning commission. Okay, we're on to item number five. Item number five is public comment and this is an opportunity for any members of the public to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda, although if you heard before I moved the items C and D, which is competitive bidding requirements for purchase of unmanned aerial vehicles and resolution accepting twenty-five thousand dollar donation from Marathon Petroleum in regards to unmanned aerial vehicles. And a couple of folks have signed up, so you can wait till after we take action on the consent agenda for that one. But if you want to comment on anything else of the council, come on up. All right, well, I've got you signed up, Mr. Hoopermans, for the drones, but go ahead and get your comment in. Okay, any other public comment or anything else that's not on our agenda? Okay, going to move on to item six, which is our consent agenda, and that's for items A, B, E, F, and G. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve items six, A, B, E, F, G on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve consent agenda items A, B, E, F, and G. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Okay, items C and D. Chief Floyd, you want to give a quick intro and then I'll take a public comment on that?
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of council and members of the audience. The items that you're seeing on your council agenda for unmanned aerial vehicles and the donation from Marathon Refinery are pursuant to a need that I've identified in the Anacortes Police Department. To give you a little background on where this came to be, I have some call types that we've responded to over the last few years where that capability would have been very useful to our staff. In twenty-eighteen, Anacortes Police Department responded to an individual claiming to be suicidal, stating they had consumed alcohol and marijuana and possession of a firearm. Our investigation determined they were in the area of the high school and further determined they were in that heavily wooded area adjacent to our high school stadium. This same individual was wanted by the Anacortes Police Department for an armed robbery that occurred less than a week prior. Everyone familiar with that heavily wooded area knows it's an ideal location for someone to hide when avoiding efforts for law enforcement to take him into custody. A UAV was requested to the location to try to determine that individual's location. The Swinomos Police Department arrived with their UAV after about an hour response time. The Skagit County Sheriff's Office, who also had a UAV program at the time, was able to send someone over approximately two hours after we requested that capability. Upon the arrival of the Swinomos Police Department, we were able to identify the suspect's location. The Anacortes Police Department assembled a tactical team to go in and contact that suspect and safely take him into custody without incident. Later the same year, at Washington Park, we had a death investigation that was ultimately determined to be a suicide. Prior to that determination, though, the information we had was there was a body located a short distance off the shoreline, an area that was too deep for someone to access from the shoreline, yet too shallow in the rocky areas allowing for the safe use of a recovery boat to get close to that individual. The circumstances significantly hampered efforts to document the body and its condition prior to recovery attempts being made. The availability of a UAV would have aided this investigative process dramatically. In twenty-twenty-one, the Anacortes Fire Department responded to a very large structure fire in the fifteen-hundred block of Sixth Street, a fully engulfed multi-story building located between the roadway on the south side and the water on the north side of the The Anacortes Fire Department efforts to access and extinguish this fire was hampered by the lack of a city-owned fire response boat and then the location of the building itself. At the scene, Chief Harris asked me if the Anacortes Police Department had the ability to fly UAV, which would allow him to obtain valuable information as the incident commander to assess and determine the best way to fight the structure fire. At that time, we did not have the capacity and surrounding agencies with the UAVs were unable to respond at that time. In May of twenty-twenty-two, the Anacortes Police Department received a missing person report from the daughter of a seventy-five-year-old Anacortes resident. This missing individual had health conditions in addition to being disoriented, but was mobile and physically capable of walking a fair distance. This individual left his wallet, cellphone, and vehicle home, eliminating many of the search methods that we would use to locate endangered missing persons. It took six days and multiple search and rescue missions, the last being with search dogs, to locate this missing individual who had been seated at a low point in our forest lands off of the trail, wearing camouflage clothing. A UAV with thermal camera would have greatly aided locating that person in the forestland area well off the trail, especially when you're looking for someone that is dressed in clothing designed to blend into a forested environment. Most recently, August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, the Thompson Trail was damaged to a fire and the stability of the understructure was unknown. ATF investigators assisting with that investigation needed to see the underside of the trail to properly assess the damage and determine at what point the trestle fire originated. As APD did not have a UAV, this assessment was conducted by boat, which did not allow fire investigators to get as close as they wanted to to examine this damage. Also, over the last couple of years, throughout warmer months of the year, the Anacortes Police Department and the Anacortes Fire Department have received nine-one-one calls from citizens reporting what appears to be an oil or fuel sheen on the waters of Fidalgo Bay. To date, every instance in these calls has been determined to be a type of algae that grows in certain weather conditions and only when expected up close is it confirmed to be algae. Due to the fragile balance of ecosystems, Anacortes Police Department and the fire departments have to investigate these calls to confirm if a spillard has occurred or not and if so, so the appropriate steps can be taken to contain it and start cleanup efforts. Camera mounted on a UAV would allow us to do this from the shoreline remotely and quickly determine if further actions necessary. UAVs are also valuable assets during disasters, whether man-made or naturally occurring, to assess damage, locate victims in need of rescue when roadways and infrastructure can be compromised. I know the council has, likely has some concern about the fact that this is a single-source request. A single-source request in this instance is necessary to purchase as Axon Air provides proprietary flight management programming that is used by all the surrounding law enforcement agencies to include Skagit County Sheriff's Office, Swinomos PD, Oak Harbor Police Department, and the Burlington Police Department. And able to purchase a UAV from this particular manufacturer through multiple different sources, but the Axon Air package that includes the flight management software and programming allowing multiple agencies to interface when conducting joint missions and operations is not available through other sources. Joint operations are common when larger search patterns are necessary locating missing individuals and wanted persons that pose a significant public safety risk or for large disasters. A similar comparison would be agencies communicating by the use of police radio. I can purchase radios from different manufacturers, multiple vendors, but if the radio frequency programmed in those is not the same, we're not going to be able to communicate. It's much the same with the Axon Air programming. Surrounding agencies are using that platform and so to be able to interface with them, we have to be on the same platform. In twenty-twenty-two, the Marathon Refinery contacted me and advised they were looking for a grand opportunity for the Anacortes Police Department to purchase an item that would normally not be affordable by our department that would also enhance our ability to provide efficient public safety to the community. I immediately suggested the UAV platform as this would aid and enhance our public safety capabilities. Marathon Petroleum awarded the Anacortes Police Department twenty-five thousand dollars to cover the cost of the UAV platform, pilot training, the first year of pilot licensing, flight operation system, video evidence library storage. system, video evidence library storage, and pilot data tracking.
All right, thank you. I guess we'll take the public comments, and then I'll turn it over to council to ask your questions. Mr. Hoopermans, come on up.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Wim Hoopermans. I'm a taxpayer here in Anacortes. And my taxpayer money pays for the jobs that the city has, including the police. And so I think the police should never have any single doubt where their interests are, namely with the citizens of Anacortes. I object to them getting money from corporations, accepting money from corporations, because it starts the slope where they have to return a favor. Whether that favor is flying the drone over the refinery or just looking for some oil sheen, I don't care. It's a slippery slope. So I do think that the officer just gave a good explanation how they want to use it, but even there, the purchase of drones should have been more publicly discussed and so that we citizens know where it's allowed to use the drone and where not, what to expect. So I also think as a council, if you believe that indeed the Anacortes Police should have drones, it's not a big amount of money. You can approve it without the gift, the grant from Marathon. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Evan Saxton?
I'm Evan Saxton, resident here of Anacortes. I'd like to agree with most of what the previous gentleman had to say. One thing that he mentioned about the cozy relationship between the corporation of Marathon Petroleum and Anacortes, I think it should be noted that Matthew Gill, who's the senior manager of Marathon Petroleum here in Anacortes, was a contributor to our mayoral campaign. If you take away the people who donated the maximum, he would be within the top tier of donors. I think that's important to note. The chief did mention a number of use cases which were interesting. If you took special note of the six that he gave, three of those were fire-related. One of those could be handled by the refinery, who is providing the donation, and only two of those were explicitly police-oriented matters. I think that that's also, that discrepancy is important to note as to where that money will be going towards and the priorities under which they'll be used. Another interesting note that I thought of was he delivered a number of use cases, which are interesting, and they do make sense when stated. However, when Marathon Petroleum donated $9,800 for a mobile camera, the priority that was discussed was for public events. Those public events apparently have morphed into permanent camera being stationed on T Avenue and directed explicitly towards gathering evidence about the residents who are living there. Worth noting. And so I did not know about this vendor specifically, so I did turn to the DJI website. The most expensive consumer-grade drone on there is $2,000. Now, they also offer enterprise packages, which I'm sure this would fall under, and the most expensive one that was listed there was for cinematic productions. You know, those beautiful sweeping shots that we all love. That drone was $9,500. So if this specialized drone is equivalent to a cinematic one, that leaves $15,500 of this $25,000 donation unaccounted for, and I think that that's worth noting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the audience want to talk about, you know, as a career military aviator, I worked with drones all the time and commercial-rated pilots still actively flying. UAS is the term, unmanned aerial systems, but drones is fine. Who wants to talk about drones some more? Come on up. Okay. Yep, okay. So we're past public comment. We're talking on issues that are on the agenda.
Brian Wetcher, 2407, Forest Park Lane. Good evening, council members. I would like to address a threat that is quite a bit larger in general than the outlined threats that the good chief just spoke about for the city of Anacortes, something that is, we consider a disaster, but is perhaps presentable, or at least we can ameliorate with the use of drones. I've advocated this for several years now, for use of thermal imaging drones in the forest lands, particularly during the summertime, so that we, if we do have an incident within the forest lands, we would be able to see the thermal column long before it became an event such as the one we had at Little Cranbury. I would hope that any system of drones that we bring into the city for enforcement and public safety would be able to be double, would be able to double of its use, particularly during the hot months of the year. We all love our forest lands, but one of the worst disasters we could have in the city of Anacortes that would take in many people and much property destruction, much more than any individual criminal action, is forest lands, wildlands, fire. We only have, how many employees do we have? Even during the summertime, we have about five employees out there in 2,000 more acres of forest land. This is some of its old growth, some of its second growth, some of its healthy, some of its not. I think one of the best things we could buy for this city would be a thermal imaging system. It could be stationary on the top of Mount Erie, borrowing off the towers, but I would urge if you are going to invest in a drone system that it have that capability so that we can surveil the forest lands, particularly at night during the summer months when people are camping out and we do have the risk of forest fire. One wildlands forest fire in the city of Anacortes could really be the kind of disaster that we could not come back from. So the surveillance systems that I've seen that are thermal imaging cost about $5,000. I think that's a fairly modest investment for the protection it might afford us. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I had also Mike Pearl signed up to talk. Did you want to address the council? Okay, on something later on in our agenda? Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, council questions for chief?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Just to make sure I'm following, you know, of course, I've read the information contained in the packet, and I think that, you know, in hearing the public comment from Mr. Hoopermans had some, expressed some concern about relationships, as did Mr. Saxton concerning, you know, the cost of drones. And I didn't see how many in the packet that was being discussed. I think that, at least in my understanding, I think that we were talking about the $25,000 and being able to use it for that purpose, and it sounds like Mr. Wetcher was, you know, supportive of a thermal energy imaging drone. It could be used in the forest lands, but what I didn't hear was how many drones were you thinking you might need, you know, and how far you think this $25,000 could go? I think you presented the argument for why you wanted them, but just sort of, you know, to answer the question about the cost of the drones and how could we, you know, maximize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Young. So this covers the cost of one unit, and we have designated four pilots for training, and that's to make sure that we're efficiently covering all shifts that we have, working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This also does have the capability for thermal, so it would pick up the concerns that Mr. Wetcher had, as well as being able to identify heat signatures in the forest lands for lost individuals, which we commonly have, also search and rescue applications in open waters. So there's a lot of capability that it could have as far as...
You've answered my question. I guess what I was also hoping to hear a little bit about was that part of the put-forward of this cost also includes some training for some of the officers as well, including in that is the drone and other pieces, correct?
Correct.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, before council goes in, I missed an online commenter, so I assume that's what you wanted to comment on, Rochelle Kaloha?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I just wanted to say it seems like you're trying to pull another fast one again, especially with voting to approve a single-source contract, kind of like you did last year with the cameras you were trying to put all around town. The fact that we are a small town and the amount of money we continue to keep putting towards militarizing our small police department is highly problematic to me. We've got basically no crime to justify this, or it's a small crime problem, and there is no reason for cops to go this hard and for our citizens to be paying for this. But I guess they're not. It's disgusting we continue to let private donations by large corporations to fund the further militarization of our police department, and I deeply question why we are allowing this. A few incidents don't necessitate a need. Y'all pretend to care about a couple of humans and disagreed with vaccinations and mask mandates. It sounds like the fire department should get a drone based on the chief's testimony, but I'm sure a couple of those bros have some already. Y'all could probably, like, just use the ones you got. We were able to use the surrounding agency's UAVs, and again, a couple instances don't provide, prove a need. Unlike the need for social workers, Marathon can buy their own drones. They're in, and they could check out their own oil slicks. They're infringing on our, y'all are infringing on our privacy in disgusting ways, and there is no need for them. Why don't we use some of your intended costs on doing something that will actually make a difference instead of spying on the people? If you're not paying full-time attention to these issues, they're easily slid in without community awareness. And I feel like that is often very intentional on the council, council's plans, but I think that the community should have more input on this. And then I think that we should ask the community for a greater discussion about surveillance that impacts them as well, instead of just giving one company the contract. Maybe you can explain the reasoning behind them being the only option, which you kind of did, but I think it's kind of not cool. And also, why do we need this in the first place? Like, why do we legit need this? Y'all told us the town surveillance cameras could only be operated by one company as well. Maybe we should get community and second opinions, just like y'all are doing, like, on the Public Works Committee right now, just how Carolyn Moulton asked for different bids. I'm curious why y'all believe the need to go this hard into creepy surveillance when our crime statistics don't justify the kind of expenditure. Most people disagree with this level of surveillance. I completely disagree with just opting towards no bidding, and I think that us citizens should have more time to look into this, and we should definitely give more time for our community to put. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry about that. I don't think I've missed anybody now. Counsel?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Council Rule of Procedure 6.8 sets out what is authorized for the consent agenda. Waivers of competitive bidding aren't on it, so I think staff should just always expect that waivers of competitive bidding get pulled from the consent agenda, and I'd hope that some designated staff member could be accountable for ensuring compliance with those procedures, making sure that the things that are listed on consent make it to consent, but things that aren't listed as eligible for consent don't. We do get donations from corporations. I think that we appreciate donations from corporations, just like we appreciate donations from anybody else. We do have an ordinance that requires acknowledgement and council approval of these donations above a certain level, and that's because the statute requires that, but also because we want that transparency to avoid any appearance, perception, or presence of any impropriety. That's what we're doing tonight. That's one of the two items, is the acceptance of the donation. So I think that that tries to deal with that, that particular issue. I had understood Public Works already had a drone. Do we know if that's the case? Do you happen to know, chief?
Not that is...
Not the same, not, not...
That is equipped for the capabilities we're interested in. I have no idea.
They have less of a need for the thermal camera, but I thought that they had some capability.
They may. I don't know what the Public Works capabilities are.
Yeah. Anyway, so I think that the police chief has laid out a pretty good case for how the drone might be used. I could definitely see how the thermal camera could be very useful for firefighting, especially as Mr. Wetcher pointed out, if we believe that we have a fire, being able to detect it with infrared seems like a pretty useful case. Search and rescue as well. You need really quick response capabilities, especially for old people wandering away from facilities or homes, and if you don't have the people to search immediately, the radius just keeps getting bigger and the area that you need to search really quickly. So, I mean, I see a lot of usefulness for this particular piece of equipment. I think that the concern amongst members of the public, and I think we'll hear it from others as well, is just about how it might be used. I think that the cases you laid out are probably not items of concern, but how else it might be used could be. So I just wonder if APD has already or will be developing policies around use of the drone. Who gets to use it? Who gets to view the footage? All those types of things. Maybe there's a model policy. Can you speak to that?
Exactly. I will be obtaining sample policies from our surrounding agencies as well as model policy that's available. We have not crafted a policy yet because we've not obtained this capability, so we'll be crafting that prior to its deployment and the pilots finishing their training.
So I think that really is the crux of it. The tech is not the problem, it's the potential for abuse. I don't see that as a real problem or a high potential of a problem, but it certainly could be, and that's why we have the policies. And I am comfortable in trusting the police to follow their own policies. We give the police guns. We trust the police every day. So I would like, I would like us to see a copy of those when you're ready, but otherwise I'm comfortable moving forward with this now because the tech itself is something that could really be useful to us. Thank you.
Miss Cleveland?
Yeah, thank you. I just had one question when you mentioned the data storage. Is that, is that an annual payment, or is it a one-time? How long will that be covered, and how much does that approximately cost?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
As you said, there was like, there was data storage?
Correct.
For whatever's the footage? Is that, I'm assuming that is on a cloud somewhere, and we, is that an annual cost or is that a one-time?
There is an annual cost, which again, Marathon has paid for the first year, but subsequent years, the flight management software, evidence data storage, operating system programming, everything else that's needed to run that has a yearly total combined cost of $6,500.
Okay, so we should plan on putting that into the budget?
Correct.
I mean, I appreciate the comments that were made, and concern from donations from corporations, but I would also make the argument that, you know, it's a large employer of the community. This isn't just for police. Marathon donates money to the family center, to the school district, to a number of their nonprofit organizations where they, where there is a request or a need. So as long as it's done with transparency, as it is being done right now, I don't have a problem with that component of it. And I do think that there is, I appreciate the examples you gave of... I appreciate the examples you gave of times where we've either had to borrow drones or we could have used drones more effectively. I think that it makes sense that we would want a drone that can interact with and complement surrounding agencies, whether it's the county, whether it's Oak Harbor, because we know things don't always go by boundaries, geographical boundaries. So that's something that I'm comfortable with. The one component that I agree with Mr. Walters is the fact that I would like to see a policy. I know that that's something that I've brought up in the past with you and Mayor Miller, but I also think we should have somewhat of a policy for any cameras beyond just the drone. And I would like to see that discussed further in a public safety committee meeting or among you guys. But that I would like to see come back sooner than later, so that there's confidence with the public, too, because I think that we've got to be clear about a storage of data and requests for information and things like that. So that would be my only request, other than moving forward with this.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I would like to second Ms. Cleveland McGrath's comments. My discomfort with this is the process by which it is occurring. Something like this, I believe, should have come to the public safety committee first. This is a big decision. It is surveillance, and it is a policy decision, and we don't have that policy yet. So as Mr. Walter said, having it on the consent agenda isn't the way to go, and I agree that this should have been more of a process, maybe bring it to committee. The committee reports to full council and the public of we are considering this, because it's sort of sprung on everyone, and I don't think that that's the best way to handle these types of situations, whether it's a repair of a leak or whether it's getting a drone that... I really appreciate the instances that you shared, and Mr. Wetcher also. I think it could have a lot of benefits, but I am not comfortable having it on the consent agenda at a meeting, and we decide right now when we have no policy, including for our existing camera that's on T Avenue. So I just want to make sure that we do things in the right way as far as informing the public, informing council, and giving people a time to mull things over, things that are going to affect us, things for good and maybe for ill. What are the policies? Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Mr. Walters?
And I'm not sure I would characterize this purchase as being used for surveillance so much as for... as a tool. The surveillance cameras, the security cameras, definitely are more of a surveillance tool, and some of that is maybe just semantics, but both of them have potential for privacy implications, and I think that's really the key. Anytime that we're dealing with... I mean, we hear that in the national media all the time. There's definitely a lot of focus on that. Legitimate or not, this has the potential to have legitimate concerns surrounding it. That's why we craft policies. So, I mean, I think we can work through all that, but it's definitely something that APD, but also the rest of the administration, should anticipate heightened community concern about. And it's our job to make sure that we're checking all the boxes and making sure that we're doing our due diligence around protecting the privacy rights of people who could be subject to this tech. So, we still have the items in front of us, and I would be comfortable with a commitment from APD, from Chief Floyd, to bringing us the policies in the near term. I assume we're not going to be able to obtain this immediately, but I would be comfortable approving this and moving this forward, and so we have simultaneous tracks.
Even after we obtain the equipment, I'll be waiting for...
Training.
Training with Skagit County. We'll be doing that cooperatively, as they have pilots in-house that are qualified to instruct. We can do that locally at very little cost, and prior to those being deployed, I will be able to have policy to share with Public Safety Committee and then as council as a whole.
And I assume APD is subject to the FAA Part 107 test requirement, so...
Correct.
You've got to go get that done as well.
I have four pilots that have already completed the Part 107 class.
I'm sorry, what?
My pilots have already completed the Part 107 class in anticipation for the next round of training.
Okay. But they haven't taken the FAA test?
They've passed the test.
Oh, they have passed the test. Okay. So that's really... Check that box already.
Yes.
That's not really an obstacle to implementation, then?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, I would just ask maybe that we provide those policies before we begin using it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Well, so then in that case, I would move to approve Resolution 3108 waiving competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of unmanned aerial vehicles.
Second?
I know that ended with an upswing, but that actually was the end of my sentence.
Yeah. A motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Carter to approve Resolution 3108 waiving competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of unmanned aerial vehicles. Go ahead and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor Miller?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just have one more...
Any additional discussion? You caught me on that one.
Thank you. So maybe it's not going to be used for surveillance, but maybe that could be a part of the policy, because, again, we do have a surveillance... Camera being used for surveillance currently, regardless of how people feel about that. That needs to be called out, what it will be used for and what it will not be used for, and who has access to the information, and for how long. I think that needs to be very clear.
There are specific laws as far as the use of UAV-mounted cameras and the footage that they are able to legally obtain, and as the Anacortes Police Department has demonstrated over many years, we not only adhere to the laws, but higher standards beyond that. So I do not see that as being an issue.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second, and any additional discussion? I think Mr. Young?
Yes.
On 3108.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Miller. You know, I just wanted to say, as we move forward on this, recognizing the importance of privacy, but also recognizing the importance of being able to do good policing, there's a difference. And the reason I'm using the emphasis on good policing, those are tools. So, you know, I am okay moving forward. You know, I like the idea that there will be some policy about how it would be used, when it's appropriate, whom can use it. So that sort of addresses the concerns as expressed by the people that came up and spoke and online and spoke, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
And I am also not concerned about APD's use of the drone, but it's also... At the same time, it's not illegitimate to be concerned about that, and that's why we talk about the policies and the requirements for that, and because I assume the policies will lay out, you know, the applicable statutes or other laws that constrain APD and go beyond that to explain who can do what, and that will help reassure us and the public.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Carter to approve Resolution 3108, and I'll go ahead and call for a voice vote. Mr. Franciac, if you want to take a roll call vote.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
No.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And we still have the other Resolution 3109. Counsel?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
This resolution is required because our ordinance establishing our donation policy requires approval for donations over $10,000. I do recall that we were doing those acceptance of donations by ordinance, because I think that's what the statute says, but other jurisdictions have interpreted to be resolution. Anyway, so this one would authorize that donation of $25,000, the restricted use being that UAV purchase. I don't see anything particularly wrong with that. So I move approval of Resolution 3109.
Okay.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Any additional discussion?
Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I thought of one more thing. Notably, the refineries are not inside the city of Anacortes. Arguably, if the company providing the donation were inside the city, it might be more of a conflict. And I assume we're not using the drone to do work for Marathon, and Marathon can buy its own drones more easily than they can go through this public process to give us the money. So I'm not very concerned about that aspect of this at all. Mayor Miller?
Yes, Chief?
It should be noted that Marathon purchased the exact same platform for Skagit County several years ago, and there's been no issues there other than them using it for public safety and improvement of rescue efforts. And Marathon has also made previous purchases for our department, enhancing our ability to catch online predators and digital forensics, enhancing those capabilities. They purchased exonerate patrol vehicles for our citizens' patrol. Marathon has had a history of making efforts to improve the safety of the community, and it's not just our department. They've offered that to other city departments as well.
And they're an excellent water customer as well. All right. Any additional discussion? Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to approve Resolution 3109. All right, Mr. Franciac, if you would please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
No.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to Item 7, which is a public hearing, CDBG 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, and this is a discussion item led by Mr. Meesimer. Mr. Meesimer, did I give you enough time? Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience, this evening's meeting opens the first of two public hearings on the consolidated plan for the city's Community Development Block Grant administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The written public comment period opened January 23rd and will close on February 21st. The second public hearing is scheduled for February 27th, 2023. The second public hearing includes consideration of public comments, consideration of the project applications for funding, and would approve the plan's submittal to HUD. And so any comments received during the public hearings and written comment period will be included in the final action plan as well. And again, that will be coming with our second public hearing. Congress has not yet determined our specific allocation. Typically runs about $105,000 to $115,000 a year, so it's not a huge amount, but we are able to get some things done with that. As an example, this year's proposed projects includes 15% for public services to the Anacortes Family Center, and the remaining funding, including the 20% that would normally be used for admin costs, for a capital project at the Anacortes Housing Authority to replace some very worn-out roofs at 508 Sixth Street. And so I've pulled up the city's website, and this shows you our Community Development Block Grant website. It's got all the information about eligible applicants, what kind of activities are eligible and so forth. And, you know, oftentimes, we may get questions about it. We guide them to the website, and/or Ms. Stewart will personally answer those questions. That's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Really, you know, it was... I really appreciated the explanation. You know, I think part of what I had submitted earlier was a question of how broad can the applicants be? And I think that in this, you know, the website itself, and then also the packet information that you and the fabulous Joanne put into the packet was exceptional, and I think it made clear that there are other opportunities, but right now, we know that it's what we have and the use of the money that we're doing right now is consistent with what its purpose is. But, you know, it does not mean that there aren't other ideas that can come to the table. It just means that right now, these are what we're putting forward, and that's what we have. And I really appreciated that, because that was a question that I had, you know, could another idea be brought forward that met that same criteria, whether it's economic, whether it's housing, whether it's moving forward? And I really appreciate the work that you guys have done on that, from start to finish. So thank you.
Ms. Stewart does do a very fine job.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
There are two projects in the plan for this coming year. One is to fund the family center with the services money, and services money is limited to 15% of the total, so it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000. And the other project is for the Housing Authority re-roof. I have always wondered, and maybe I've asked this before as well, if it's an efficient allocation of the money to the family center, given the administrative reporting requirements associated with this bucket of money? Because we do spend some general fund money supporting the family center and supporting other agencies. If we traded those, would an agency like the Housing Authority, which is already receiving other money, is already doing the work of doing the federal reporting requirements, could we be more efficient? If that made any sense, could you speak to that question?
I think you all have seen the Anacortes Family Center report that comes out on a yearly basis. If so, I think that would answer the question, honestly. In my mind, I think what's happening here is the Anacortes Family Center is getting these funds for operational purposes through the Anacortes Family Center, and I think it makes a big difference for them. Now, we may have some funds left over from last year's allocation, which would go towards the capital project with the Anacortes Housing Authority, as I understand it. I don't know what we're going to have left yet, but that's about the best I can do with that without doing a little more research.
Yeah, I was just... I was not suggesting a total reduction of money to any entity that's already receiving it. What I was suggesting was if you can align the reporting requirements to an agency that is best suited to do those reporting requirements. So, for instance, AFC acquires a lot of non-federal money, and AHA acquires a lot of federal money. So if AHA is already subject to those federal requirements, does it make more sense to give them all the federal money and AFC some non-federal money?
And I wouldn't disagree that the AFC may not be the best at reporting, following all the reporting requirements. And yes, the Housing Authority is very well-trained in that, so...
I would just be looking for those opportunities to move, bot some money around, to reduce the total burden of reporting, if there's an opportunity to do that. Maybe there isn't, but...
I can work with Ms. Stewart, and we can answer that the next time around.
This is a public hearing, so it is open for any members of the public that want to comment on this. Okay, seeing none, one more time, counsel. All right, thank you, Mr. Meesimer, and I don't think you get to leave the podium just yet. I think you'll be up here for a while. Other business, Item 8A, Anacortes Chamber of Commerce Visitor Information Center update, and you have an introduction.
Mayor Miller, members of the council and the audience, at its December 19th meeting, the council had some questions regarding the Chamber Visitor Information Center and the public restrooms, and this is regarding the lodging tax funding. And so to that vein, we have asked the CEO and President of the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Jessica Kaiser, to come in and give a presentation for you, and with that, I'd like to introduce Jessica.
I'm sorry, we didn't preload that for you.
I'm sorry we didn't preload that for you.
So thank you, guys, for inviting us out to give an update. I wanted to introduce the chamber staff here. Elizabeth and I are going to be sharing a little bit more about the Visitor Information Center and the restrooms, as well as a little bit more on the grant tourism brand. So showing on the screen is our chamber staff. We've got Kate on the top right, who's our events and communications coordinator. Below her is James, our operations director, and then Elizabeth is here with me today, our marketing and membership director. All four of us serve the community, the business community as a whole, but we spoil our members. We oversee and manage the Chamber Office, the Visitor Center, and the Licensing Office. To do all this, we rely on over 150 volunteers each year, and we're fortunate to work closely with many community partners. So we'll start with an overview of our Visitor Information Center, also known as the VIC. The VIC is run by 11 volunteers, and they served over 4,500 visitors last year. The VIC is open every day, Sunday through Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We look at the VIC as our main tourist stop in town, because they share marketing materials with the tourists, provide information about local activities and events, they welcome the cruise ships, provide relocation packets, and answer countless questions about our city. Moving forward, we are actively recruiting more volunteers. We are running a "Are you retired and want to meet new people?" campaign in Anacortes American and the Clam Digger, so we can expand the VIC hours for the busier season come spring and summer. Last summer, we gave the Visitor Center a fresh new look and feel. We were able to update the flooring, stain the shelves to match, and recover the countertops. We've also updated the technology based on the change in visitors. We added a self-help kiosk for millennial or Gen Z visitors who prefer to do it themselves. We also took out the old restaurant menus and replaced them with QR codes for visitors to scan from a binder, and it's sorted by food type. This graph here shows the 2022 data on the visitors who went into the Visitor Center. About 40% were from out of state or out of country, and 45% were from in-state. This is the 2022 data on what the visitors requested information on. The biggest category, adventure, includes if they requested information on kayaking, parks and hiking, boating, fishing, biking, or other recreational activities. The other tourism category includes if they requested information on general tourism and area info, such as whale watching or the murals downtown. The information category includes transportation information requests, including the ferry schedules, and other service requests, such as the Department of Licensing, the Post Office, City Hall, or other general information, such as picking up magazines or the phonebook. The public restrooms are normally open 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, and 11 to 3 on the weekends. The hours are extended during community events. Now, the public restrooms have had some vandalism issues over the past couple of years, so we've had to get kind of creative on ways to keep the facility fixed, cleaned, and then safe for families to use each day. In 2021, we started having break-ins during the evening, where we typically found a large mess on Monday morning. The trespassers were sometimes gone before we got there, but they would leave a large mess, things like a full roll of wet paper towels in the garbage can, piles of random dirty clothes, drug paraphernalia, razors, blood, and they even cut the water line under the sink to take a warm shower, which then flooded the bathroom, seeped under the wall, and warped the licensing floors. We are having to pay for a professional cleaner to come do an emergency cleaning each time, and this has happened at least 10 times now. We have switched locks, added a keypad that auto-locks at 5:00 p.m., changed the codes, checked the items, checked four items stuffed into the door jamb, and I even started driving by the chamber after hours to check if the restrooms were empty. If I found someone in there, I would call the police immediately. We have also called the non-emergency line if the trespasser was no longer there, so the frequency of the break-ins were reported with the APD. They even added our restrooms as a stop to their patrol route. So far, the police have not been there when the trespassers are there. In 2022, we installed two IR motion-centered cameras just outside of the restrooms. They were purposely installed up high, so they couldn't be reached. Since then, one person climbed on his bike and ripped the cameras off the wall. So we recently purchased replacement cameras and cages for each of the cameras to be reinstalled even higher. There is a meeting set up early tomorrow morning with the port and the city in the chamber to talk through all of the public restroom issues and share ideas for moving forward. At this point, we are keeping the restroom hours as is and will expand the weekend hours once the VIC hours are expanded. The grant funding is also used for beautification projects downtown. We are continuing the hanging flower baskets and the sidewalk planters, as well as installing and designing new tourism banners on Commercial Avenue. So thanks to past grant funding, we were able to replace the crab pot tree in a pinch when we found out it was no longer safe to install. We decided to keep the coastal feel with lights and decor, and we were able to use the tree as a tool to partner with more of the community. For example, the Arts Festival is installing the kids' arts on the tree each year. The Anacortes Community Theater Group is helping with the performances at the tree lighting event, and the Marine Trades Group does all the setup and takedown of the tree. As we are looking for more groups to partner with, our newly-formed DEI committee can help us find ways to make this event more inclusive for other faiths and traditions. We also partner with the city on the installation of the lighted wreaths, the rope lights, and the lighted trees on Commercial. Unfortunately, the rope lights weren't as planned. The rope lights are planned to be taken down at the same time we take down the wreaths. They didn't hold up to the weather, and so we're planning, we are not planning to reinstall them again. However, the plan as of right now is to put the standard white lights into the tree branches again this fall. The tree lighting event has grown so much that we ended up adding a pop-up screen so that more people on the streets could see the stage and performers. And we're also continuing our trolley rides and other December traditions. We would also like to review some marketing highlights from last year's Experience Anacortes grant request that helped draw tourism to Anacortes. One feature that was new for 2022 was the Evening Special with King Five, which covered Anacortes events, businesses, recreation, and history.
Okay, all great places to eat and drink, but Anacortes is also home to a restaurant dedicated to dear old Dad. Here's Kim with their story.
So I've got the game sandwich here.
This hometown diner in the heart of Anacortes is a place that lives up to its name.
That's my dad.
Kathy's dad, George, playing the sousaphone at age 18, a moment he remembers with pride at age 90.
I was in the Army Band, and it went very well.
That memory is one of hundreds displayed from floor to ceiling at Dad's diner. Framed photos of beloved fathers brought in by customers from generations past and present, dads who served their country and their community. Cowboy dads, racing dads, vacationing dads, and granddads, more than 500 of them filling every inch of wall space.
Three people come in today, they're like, where can I put a picture of my dad?
When Fletcher and Neil opened the diner, they wanted to create a place that felt like home, but they never imagined their collection of photos would grow so big or that their seats would stay so full.
It's humbling. It's, you never expect to open a restaurant and be this busy all the time.
That was a clip from one of the specials that ran. We received feedback from one of the other featured businesses, Fidelgo Fudge. As soon as they were shown on the special, their orders started coming in, and they could hear their orders ding from their computer, and it continued to ding throughout the whole show, so much so that it took them over a week to catch up on their new online orders, and the same thing happened at the re-airing a couple weeks later. This year, most of our advertising funds will go to print and digital advertising. 40% of our funds are for print advertising, and 43% are for digital ads. The bar graph on the right is of our 2023 media distribution estimates. These are some of the advertising agencies that we work with. The highlighted agencies are ones that we will be pursuing new opportunities with this year. The first one, Bonneville, Seattle, we are continuing our geofencing target display ads. Geofencing is the use of a virtual perimeter in a real-world geographic location, for example, the ferry terminals. We set up geofenced areas at the ferry terminals so that when visitors enter these virtual areas, they are served our ads. We will be expanding on this technology in 2023 and adding geoconversions. Geoconversions will similarly set up virtual perimeters in town. When someone views an ad and then enters the geoconversion area, which would be in town, that counts as a conversion, and we will be able to use this data to analyze the success of our geofenced ads next year. For 2023, we are also further expanding our digital advertising presence through YouTube ads. YouTube is the second-largest search engine after Google and has 1.9 billion users. People watch over 1 billion hours of YouTube a day, which is more than Netflix and Facebook combined. The Port of Seattle is the next highlighted one, and they were excited to have Anacortes apply for their Tourism Spotlight program in the Sea-Tac Airport, and we were awarded a billboard. We applied, and we ended up being selected to have first pick at our location for quarter one. We chose Concourse D, which is where Alaska Airlines gates are located, because 51% of passengers at the Sea-Tac Airport fly Alaska. Because of the Spotlight Program award, the only associated cost for the billboard is very minimal, the leasehold fee and the install, which was about $1,500. The billboard shown here is featuring a local photographer, Rickon, and it is currently on display through March 31st at Sea-Tac. The next highlighted agency is 425 Magazine, and we are running ads with them for the first time in several years. It is the most-read magazine on the east side, which encompasses 12 cities and 36 square miles. The 425 area is home to companies like Microsoft, Google, Boeing, Amazon, and Facebook. 12 of the 20 wealthiest zip codes in the northwest are in the 425 area code, and 425 has many affluent readers who are interested in travel. We also added Seattle Gay News online ads throughout the year. Over 477,000 of the adult population of the Seattle Tacoma area identifies as LGBTQ+ Seattle Gay News reaches 47% of that population on a monthly basis through both print and online ads. Under Stories on the right side, the agencies in blue are some notable free features from 2022, such as the free featured article on Anacortes in the Washington Post. And then this is the main homepage of anacortes.org, the main tourism website, which attracted around 100,000 unique visitors last year and had 200,000 page views. Top pages visited in order of ranking were the Events Calendar, then the Ferry, major events like Beer on the Pier, Waterfront, and Uncorked, then the Business Directory, followed by Plan Your Visit. We will be using the new 2023 photographs on the website as new content and rotate the home page's images seasonally. In 2022, this event calendar was our most visited page, and it published over 350 events for the Anacortes community. All events can be posted at no cost by the organization themselves, and it's very user-friendly. This is the Business Directory menu, and these categories were specifically developed based on the top tourism attractions. We were all excited to have successful in-person events last year. These are photographs from 2022's tourism events. Tourism events are proven to draw people to visit Anacortes, such as Beer on the Pier and Anacortes Uncorked. Uncorked wine and food experience moved to February in 2023, it was on Saturday, to attract tourists during the shoulder season. We will be collecting data on the success of the new timing of this event through the surveys that will go out. These are the 2022 event survey results. Respondents answered questions about their spending habits before and after these events. A few highlights, 72% said they had a meal or drink before or after attending Anacortes Uncorked, and 33% stayed in paid accommodations. It was estimated that $86,000 was spent in town. 76% from Beer on the Pier said they had a meal or drinks before or after the event, and 24% stayed in paid accommodations. It was estimated that $235,000 was spent in town. We thank you and open up if you have any questions.
Council, questions, the chamber.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thanks for this really good information. It's really distressing about the restrooms, and I think that all these things are really important for us to know, and I appreciate your bringing us these kind of details.
All right, well, thank Mr. Young.
Yeah, I mean, really, quite honestly, I wanted to wait for the rest of council to have their questions or concerns brought forward, but, you know, really, I wanted to thank the chamber for the hard work you've done. I've watched this wonderful transformation, and, you know, from just my perspective as Chair of the LTAC Committee, you know, I do think it's money well-spent. I think that we have a population that's diverse, you know, whether it's ageisms or socioeconomic status, people wanting to relocate here and come, and I think it's been a positive thing. And I think that the deference that we're doing with the work that you're doing in bringing people here and reminding people why Anacortes is so loved is important. So, you know, in particular, I just really want to thank the chamber staff, of course, that includes you, Jessica, but, you know, really want to thank you for addressing the concerns. There will be times when councils got questions, and the reason that I really appreciate the questions that come forward is that it's really about a responsible use of dollars, and when there's questions about whether or not those dollars and how it's affecting the very public that we all are serving comes into question, you know, I fully expect them to ask any questions and, you know, maybe even reach out to you, but from the committee itself, you know, we were confident when we looked at the proposals that we felt that it was a good use of funds. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you for coming forward.
All right, well, I thank you for the partnership the chamber has with the city, and I'm happy to be back on the board as an ex-officio, I think. Obviously, as a longtime business owner in Anacortes, had some time on the chamber, but again, I think... again, I think that partnership has been good for the city, so we thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we're on to item 8B. This is a settlement agreement with Pacific Pile and Marine. This is an action item. Ms. Swetnam is coming over, and I don't think you have a PowerPoint, so.
I do not have a PowerPoint. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public. So today before council is a settlement agreement with Pacific Pile and Marine, who was the contractor that was awarded the Outfall Project. Due to permitting issues with FEMA and NOAA, the city was forced to terminate that contract, and this settlement is an attempt to resolve the remaining questions about transfer of materials and final payment under that contract. So the parties have negotiated the settlement agreement that you all were provided, which will be added to the packet. So tonight, staff is recommending approval of the settlement agreement with attached Exhibit A that provides a list of all the materials that need to be returned to the city. In addition, we're also asking for approval of the invoice that was provided to you all, which will also be added to the packet, and that invoice correlates to the first two obligations of payment pursuant to the settlement agreement.
Mayor Miller.
Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Walters.
Why do we need to approve the invoice? We don't typically approve invoices.
Well, you approve the, you approve them on the voucher list every week, so we just did this.
So you're approving it for payment, that's what you're asking for?
Correct.
All right, okay. I, just to get a motion out on the table here, move approval of the settlement agreement as presented to us, including Attachment A and including authorization to correct the $1 error in Section 2D, and approval of the January 31st, 2023, invoice 005.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to approve the settlement agreement for Pacific Pile and Marine to include a correction of the number as well as the attachment included, and there was one other piece to that, oh, and the invoice. And Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please? Oh, any additional discussion? Man, I'm getting bad, I'm missing that one. Okay, no additional discussion. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Heavick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland-McGraw.
Yes.
Most cares.
Okay, thank you, and again, just for the public, we will, we will need to rebid this, this Outfall Project, ran into some permitting trouble, but we will, we will get that job done. Okay, item 8C, Planning Commission recommendation on the bonus height provisions in the R4 Use Zone west of the Commercial Use Zone, AMC 19 dot 42 dot 050C. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Meesmer, I know you have a presentation. I know this is not the first time we've discussed this.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience, I have just a brief presentation to remind all of us about the R4 Use Zone bonus height provisions. So again, this, this map distinguishes the R4 Use Zone. The bonus height incentives in the R4, the Commercial and the Central Business District, this more clearly describes, and the one that we are actually talking about is Option 1, which is the small units, not more than 600 square feet, and at least 25% of the units hitting that mark. Planning for the future, our 2036 population projection at 22,293, plus approximately 6,000 people, and 2,260 dwelling units, current population 17,880. The Development Regulation updates in 2019, implementing key comp plan land use and housing goals and policies, including new affordable housing provisions and bonus incentives, the bonus height incentives. The R4 Use Zone is more clearly described here, you can see in the, with marked R4, with the arrows showing the exact areas, and then also the Medical Overlay Zone further to the south of 24th Street, I believe it is. And again, our R4 Zone history talks about, that went from maximum building heights of 35 and 50 feet for non-residential space in 1994, and then 2008, that changed, and the maximum building height was changed to 40 feet at that time. And this is a map that shows some of the base maximum, base and maximum height by zone, Central Business District 50 to 65, 40 to 50 in the R4, 40 to 50 in the Commercial Zone, and then 60 in the Medical Overlay Zone. So this is really getting down to the more specifics of the meeting with our Planning Commission. So these are the concepts that City Council took a look at back in June of 2022, and then, and then forwarded these to the Planning Commission. So you've got a total of eight concepts here, and this is the concepts more broken down in a map form, essentially. I know I'm going through these a little bit quickly, but I think everybody's seen these probably about 30 times. So the Anacortes Housing Action Plan in progress with, with Makers Architecture and Urban Development, and the council have approved that Anacortes Housing Action Plan by resolution just recently. But what that found was is that there is a need for more housing and that taller buildings can make more efficient use of the land, which is limited, essentially. So this slide, while rather difficult to read, includes all of the concepts on one So with that, I'd like to just speak briefly about the Planning Commission's recommendation. So the, the R4 Bonus Height Provisions using AMC 1942050C, which is 25% of the units, not more than 600 square feet, west of the Commercial Use Zone, has been subject to a moratorium since October 2019. And as a result of, you know, various circumstances, that ordinance has been extended several times, and the latest extension was under Ordinance 4031, which expires April 3rd, 2023. So the City Council and the Planning Commission have reviewed several different concepts, which we just looked at what those were, over the, over the past two years, and those were directed to the Planning Commission from Study Council for review at its public hearing December 14th and January 11th. So the Planning Commission held public hearings on both dates and received public written comment at the same time. Eight concepts were discussed at the public hearing, written comments considered and verbal comments considered during the public hearing. After deliberation and discussion, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Council Concept F. Concept F is no change to the bonus height provisions and allowing the moratorium to expire April 3rd, 2023. And that recorded motion is, is in the City Council packet this evening. So, over the past few days, Mr. Walters has proposed an alternative that would restrict the bonus type provisions to the R4 Use Zone east of O Avenue and include the Medical Overlay west of Commercial, of the Commercial Zone. The alternative includes increasing the percentage of small units from 25% to 30% and adjusting the open space requirements and allowing 100% of the open space as common indoor recreation areas or balconies. And I can, I'll turn that over to Mr. Walters to have further discussion on here in just a second, if you all want, but if the City Council wants to take into consideration Mr. Walters' alternative, then we'll need to, at a staff level, provide a notice of a public hearing before the, before the City Council to further consider those, because that's a change from what the Planning Commission heard previously. It's similar, but does have a few, a few nuances that are different than what the Planning Commission has seen. We can do that, we can get a notice in the paper as early as February 15th, and probably have a hearing before the City Council March 6th, if the council is so inclined to go that route. From a staff perspective, the Planning Commission, I think, has discussed these, these options. The council and the Planning Commission has looked at the various alternatives over a period of two years, and staff recommends allowing the moratorium to expire and leaving the bonus height provisions in place as they stand. With that, Mr. Walters may want to further elaborate on his alternative.
Okay, and, and that, I know we received a lot of comments in the last few hours, if not a couple of days. I think it's over to council now, you know, once we've, you know, the public hearings happened with the Planning Commission, so it's, it's kind of time for council, so that's why the item is not asterisk. So if you came to speak to this item, that wasn't part of the plan, we would have to open up to public comment again, should, should we pursue, that's, that's how I understand.
That's correct.
Should we pursue a different avenue than what the Planning Commission recommended? So, Mr. Walters, if you want to go ahead.
Sure, I'll take that opportunity. You don't have to ask me twice. So I would quibble a bit with a couple of things. First of all, our code requires us to open a comment period if we want to consider something outside the range of what has already been presented for public comment. Doesn't necessarily require a public hearing, but a public comment period. We could do both, we could do either. I would be in favor of taking public comment all along the way, though, including tonight. We're not required to, but why not? We wrote this moratorium way back in 2019, and I actually thought it was 2020, it's been so long, but we haven't really been working on it in that interim, you know? We spent a little bit of time coming up with some concepts, and then we sent it off to the Planning Commission. I, I don't think it's really accurate to say that we have had two and a half intensive years of working on this problem. And I've heard people speak dismissively of the public comments against allowing the moratorium to expire, as if people don't feel passionately about this subject, or as if people don't have the right to disagree, or as if the fact that we had lots of meetings about the comp plan in 2016 means that the public's opportunity to be heard on this issue passed way back then. I think all of those things are mischaracterizations, and it is important to hear from people now, and it's important to, that they have that opportunity through the Planning Commission process and potentially again before council, because people feel very strongly about this issue. And I've asked some of them to boil down why that is, because there are a lot of different potential reasons, but I think really that what the crux of it is, is a five-story building is not, is not a human-scale building. A two-story building really is, a three-story building maybe is pushing it, but a five-story building isn't. And so that scale of construction in one's neighborhood, where one owns their most important, precious, and valuable asset, generally it's your own house, is really important to people. Now, people will also complain about any number of other things that also matter to them, the view obstruction, potential for traffic, those kinds of things. Some of those are theoretical problems, some of those, like the views, are things that we just, we don't protect, and if we start traveling down that path of trying to protect views, it becomes really problematic. But the scale of the building is something that we do manage all over town. And so I think that the, the objective of this process ought to be to find where you should draw the line, because should it be M Avenue, because that's what the line would be if we allow the moratorium to expire, or should it be O Avenue, or should it be Commercial Avenue? I've advocated and made this proposal that is in the packet to try to find some compromise that council could accept. I have spoken in favor of more housing in Anacortes, especially housing that is more affordable to people that work here and can't afford to live here, to help round out our community, to make us a livable community that is a whole community of the people who work here in Anacortes. You'll, you'll hear lots of people talk about housing, and certainly I won't argue against housing, but there is an appropriate place for height and some places that aren't appropriate for height. The organization Strong Towns advocates for an incremental change in neighborhood zoning, and to go from what is effectively 30 feet or 35 feet in a neighborhood to 50, I don't think is incremental. And there aren't that many buildings that, in the R4 Zone west of Commercial Avenue that, that count as 35 feet. So my proposal here is to allow the bonus height in the R4 Zone east of O Avenue, to make O Avenue the dividing line instead of M Avenue, to allow the bonus height as well in the Medical Use Overlay, which is basically the hospital in south, that's part of R4, but there's that Medical Use Overlay on it. And the reason I would advocate that, because we have people, you know, saying we need more acreage for more housing and more tall housing, and the Medical Use Overlay already allows 60 feet in height, basically on the footprint of the hospital, and then outside of that footprint, it's back to the R4 limits, whatever those end up being. But there are some large parcels in there that could benefit from that height to make that efficient use of land that Mr. Meesmer talked about. And then part of this proposal is to modify the open space requirement to not, to at least not require roof decks, because we have heard from people, especially at the beginning of this process, when the outcry about Fidalgo Flats occurred, that the presence of a roof deck allows people to peer down into other neighboring properties. It also requires a elevator shaft and stairwell to go beyond the 50-foot height, and that's allowed by our code, as I think it should be, but it, but it requires you to have that in order to serve the roof deck. Otherwise, you might not need to have those projections beyond the 50-foot height limit. And the Family Center Building, which is not, it's not a benefit of the small unit height bonus, but it's a beneficiary of the low-income height bonus, is required to do a roof deck, even though they don't want one, because of the open space requirements. It also means that if you end up doing a roof deck because of the open space requirements, you're going to do a flat roof, so you're not doing a pitched roof or maybe some more interesting architectural roof that maybe is more consistent with the design that we want to see here. And then finally, I would increase the proportion of small units that are required to exercise the bonus height where it is utilized, from 25 to 30%, because that would be a, we need small units, they're not available in the market, small units are more likely to be less expensive, I mean, they will be less expensive than larger units. In Fidalgo Flats, the, the unit size, I think only six and a half of their 25 units were required to be less than 600 square feet, but at least from their building plans, I think the number that actually were 600 square feet was more. Mr. Meesmer, do you happen to know the number? No. Well, I think it was quite a bit more, maybe we can get that verified, but, so I don't, I don't think it would be an obstacle to requiring more units, 600 square feet or less, but it would be more of a benefit to the community, because that's the segment of the market that we are missing, and so if we can get more people to build that, I think the trade-off is better. But at the end of the day, then maybe the most important feature of this proposal would be to end that bonus height at that dividing line of, of O Avenue.
Okay, I'll just take a minute to comment on, on Mr. Walters talking about public comment. I, I think the reason I've stated that is the council has heard from the public without a doubt, we all know the issues. At some point, we can't take a plebiscite vote of all of the voters of Anacortes, that's why we're all elected here to make some of those tough decisions. So again, I'm certainly willing to open it up to public. So again, I'm certainly willing to open it up to public comment, but I don't think you're going to hear anything different from all of the written comment that you've already seen, from all the public comment that you've already seen. It's, you know, it's time to buck up and make the decision as elected officials.
Regardless of--
Ms. Cleland.
Thanks. Regardless of discussion, are we able to get a zoning map up for the public and for us to be able to discuss further? I think that's helpful. Well, that's fine. I would like the one that's approved, too.
All I have is the R4 zone zoning map available, if that works.
Okay. Well, it's okay, but you can't. Just Google it or look up City of Anacortes zoning map.
We can do that.
I think it's just helpful to--
GIS gallery.
Yeah, just so that, for discussion purposes and for the public watching or here tonight. So I guess I'll, I can talk.
Well, yeah, you talk for a while.
Unless someone wants to. So we were, I was thinking about when, we were discussing when this moratorium went into place, and I thought I was on city council, but no, I was still on planning commission when that was done. So that was 2019. I didn't join city council until January of 2020. And I spent four years on planning commission discussing this. There's people in the room here who are on planning commission with me, who we discussed extensively and debated. So I think to give a little context, we, there was a moratorium put in place because, yeah, there was a shock to the community that this new option had been exercised by a developer. 40 feet is outright for all of R4. The bonus height, as discussed and debated, was to encourage two outcomes. One is income-based affordable housing tied to, not CPI, what is it? To AMI. It's been determined, or at least anecdotally, not been exercised because of the ongoing record-keeping that is needed by developers or property owners. The other option was that 600-square-foot or less unit. And when we look across the city, one of the challenges is that we have a, we are very heavily loaded with three-bedroom, two-bath homes or larger. What we don't have are one-bedroom, one-bath units available for the community. And we have a number of folks who may have lived here for a long time, had a family, been, had a spouse, maybe the spouse has passed, or maybe they would like to downsize. And what we lack on inventory is those small units. So folks can, as they're aging and want to downsize, there's an opportunity for them. But on the other side, it comes to, which I remember discussing thoroughly, folks who have graduated from high school here and want to start to get a job here and are looking for an opportunity to rent a space and not share it with three or four other people. And we don't have those single one-bedroom, one-bath units available. So I think that's something we have to consider. You've pulled up a map, so just to kind of go over it, the purple, you can see Commercial Avenue is gray. You've got purple on the west side and purple on the east side. We're not, we never did a moratorium on the east side, but the west side is where we put the moratorium because of the five-story building. The hash marks are where you see the medical overlay, which has a 60-65 height limit because of the hospital. So if we pulled out, so what we're discussing is essentially O Avenue to M Avenue. And when you look at that property from, what is it? 12th, no, 10th Street, all the way to 22nd or so, we don't have it quite, you can't just pull up the one, the PDF document? Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Ms. Moulton.
Mr. Meesmer, could you hit the plus icon and just blow it up a little bit? Will that work? And kind of center in on it a little bit?
Yeah, that's helpful.
There we go. Now we can see the street names.
Kind of, yeah. It's always hard to find a map that's like got enough information but not too much information. I guess I've been rambling to get to this map, but I think that what we've got to discuss is, you know, we have a scarcity of land when it comes to developing property. That looks, yeah, that looks good. And so you can see the notch for O Avenue, so, and it's two large blocks, O to M Avenue West. I mean, and when you start to look at that property, you've got M Avenue, which is a pretty major thoroughfare. You've got, it's two directions, you've got bike lanes, you've got good stop signs, and you have sidewalks. So it's really pedestrian-friendly. And then you've got O Avenue that needs a ton, I would be the first to say needs improvements. I think our public works director would say O Avenue is in desperate need of improvement. I take real concern with starting to make multiple residential zones with an A, a B, a C, a D discrepancy, because it sets a precedent that we will then go, possibly do that in other zones. It has been, the edges of this zone have been established for a number, for quite a few years, if not decades. It used to be 50 feet. It's been reduced to 40 with an incentive for 50. I have a really hard time removing that based on the amount of work we've done. I understand that there's quite a few folks that are frustrated and shocked and disappointed to see that change in the neighborhood, but I have to say, from my perspective, I'm having, my responsibility is to look for the next 20, 40, 50 years, and this is where that development should go. You know, yes, I'm fine with the medical overlay on the south end of town, but to me, that north end from 24th or 22nd north has a lot greater accessibility to grocery stores, to doctors' offices, to the Tommy Thompson Trail, to public spaces, where once you go south, you don't have that as much. There's the middle school there that shows up as a park. Storvik is at the far south end. If we're trying to reduce car trips and we're trying to create a sense of neighborhood and community, to me, this, this between M and O is really where we'll see it. And that being said, I mean, just because it's allowed, it hasn't been utilized very much, but I think we've got to allow for as much opportu, what we don't want to do is limit so much that it increases the cost of land in a very finite area of the town, which then prohibits development. The reason the bonus height is in place is because we need to intentionally encourage small units, and this is one way to do it. I've rambled on now for a long time, so I will let someone else talk. But I don't, there's some components, such as the open space on rooftop. Sure, if we don't want to require it, fine, that's worth discussing, but I don't want that option removed. I think that an elevator shaft is not as, doesn't have a negative impact from a street level. You're not really seeing it. It doesn't take, it doesn't have the mass as much as the fifth floor does. But we have to accept some change. I want my kids to live here. I want my parents to be able to downsize somewhere. To me, this is kind of the pill we have to swallow of starting to see that change.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I agree with all of Ms. Cleland McGrath's rambling, as she said, because she made a lot of sense to me. But, you know, the truth of the matter is that it is a tough decision. We have a beautiful town that we're trying to preserve, but at the end of the day, there are other people that want to live here, too. We have a major issue. The issue is housing. Where are we going to put it? Are we going to do expansion? You know, can we focus, you know, if we can look here at the blue area, I think it's the MMU section being allowed to go up to 65 feet if necessary. But, you know, it's a tough decision, and I feel for the communities that want to preserve what we have. But the issue, again, is housing. How are we going to create it? Where are we going to put it? How are we going to get there? And the reality is that I believe that the best decision we can do, especially if we're going to have a vibrant downtown with the MJB property in full development, with the Port planning to do their development, that central area downtown, the density for walking, biking, and it's going to be so important. And my worry, too, is that if we don't concentrate our efforts into creating housing downtown, livable housing, in the smaller range, you know, one bedrooms, one bath, or, you know, just so people can live downtown, I think we're going to end up losing out, and we won't be solving the problem. I think that it's a tough decision. Yes, it is. And do we relish making tough decisions? But that's why we were elected. That's just why we were elected. And unfortunately, it will not make everybody happy. But, you know, in looking at every single detail I could, meeting with the people within this district here personally, going out and looking, looking to see how we can change it, what might it be? I just don't see a way around having higher density. You know, because I think at the end of the day, the byproduct is that we have a shortage of housing that we're trying to solve. We're trying to allow people to have, be able to live here and work here, creating the vibrant community that we love. So, you know, I agree with Ms. Cleland McGrath. I think that maybe some tweaks, such as Mr. Walters, the proposal to move the proposal to 35% of units to be smaller, I'm okay with that. Modify the open space requirement, you know, I'm okay with that. Allow medical use overlay near the hospital. I'm okay with that. But we still have to make the decision about this zone. And I think that the solution that, and the work that was put in by the planning commission, I think they argued, we've reviewed, and I've just not been convinced that it would be an error for our city. So because of that, I'm supportive of moving it forward.
All right. I think everybody's going to have to speak first before we go back to Mr. Walters. Ms. Moulton?
This is a tough one, as has been stated, and we've given it a lot of thought and a lot of care and appreciate the comments from people. This was a decision that we made in 2019 that was not entered into lightly, and we did have, as said, lots of public comment. And the truth is, we aren't going to make everyone happy, but we have a limited amount of space, and I believe that this is where density belongs. You can see on the map the schools, the shopping, the medical center, and the accessibility to things to help keep people out of their cars. And I believe that this is where, this is where density belongs. And the small units is one of our goals. It's one of our most pressing needs, and this gets us that, and more opportunity for that. And there are only so many places on this map in purple that will be developed to this degree. And Fidalgo Flats got us a little bit closer to our goal, and if we get a few more of those, those get us still closer.
Ms. Hubick, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Miller. I do want to thank everybody in the community that has shared their thoughts with us, both in support and not necessarily completely happy with this. And one of the things that I've heard and that I've read is that people are very concerned about losing our small-town charm, and it was definitely one of the things that I fell in love with when I moved here back in 2005. And we are. We're losing our charm, because I believe that what I feel part of the charm of this town comes from is the people that live here. I used to run into, you know, all of, all of the people that support us, our plumbers and our hairdressers and our support staff in restaurants, and I would see them in the grocery store, out at the bar, or at the farmer's market. And that doesn't happen as much, because people can't afford to live here. And I miss my friends. I miss the comfort that I think some of us have kind of gotten used to. And the easiest way to keep that small-town charm is to keep our people living and working locally. And I know that for certain, from comments that we've heard from other people, is that they're also concerned about our unhoused residents, and they feel that that takes away from the charm. We've also heard from other public comments that we don't have a place to put people, and we have to focus on having houses and having that supply side enhanced with all of the subsidies, with all of the state support or the federal support. If we don't have a place to put people, that money's not going to do us any good. So I do love the idea of increasing the affordability density at a higher than 25% and doing work on the rooftop stuff, but I think that we just rip the Band-Aid off and go as big as we possibly can and keep it out to M Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. This is probably one of the topics that I hear the most comments on, and, I mean, on both sides. But to me, it, having the accessibility where it's located makes the most sense. And one of the things that I was going to talk about is like single people moving here, starting. That was, when I was working as a recruiter, being in the high schools, one of the biggest things was people weren't able to graduate and stay here. And also what Ms. Cleland McGrath brought up was one that I hadn't really thought about, but people retiring and downsizing, selling their house, making room for families so that they can take up a smaller location. So I'm for, I agree with what you guys have said, and I'm for with moving that forward.
Okay. So before I go back to Mr. Walters, I have a question for Mr. Meesmer. Any adjustments, such as a 35% or rooftop adjustments, could that be done after the moratorium expired?
Yes, Mayor, it can.
Okay. Mr. Walters?
Thank you. A couple of notes. First of all, the medical use overlay is basically the R4 zone. The medical use overlay doesn't provide any additional height over the R4 zone absent the moratorium, except the footprint of the hospital. So the footprint of the hospital is about 60 feet. The rest of the overlay would be whatever the rest of R4 is. So with absent the moratorium, it would be a base height of 40 feet with a potential bonus height of 50 feet. Just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that. I really second all the comments that Ms. Hubick made. I think that that really, more eloquently than I captured, describes the reason that we need more housing in town. I am certainly definitely in favor of more housing. More than 11 years ago, I talked about needing a wider variety of housing types and styles, especially in our downtown core, to accommodate the people more than a decade ago that couldn't find housing here in Anacortes. And obviously, it's become much of a larger crunch across the entire region and to some extent the whole country now, but it was a problem way back then. But as the handout that I provided you demonstrates, even without that section of R4 west of O Avenue, there would be 338 acres of our downtown commercial core of the MMU-- Avenue, there would be 338 acres of our downtown commercial core, of the MMU zone, of the remainder of R4, and of the medical use overlay that would allow heights above 50 feet. And it would also allow single-purpose residential, at least on the side streets. So there's still a lot of acreage that would allow substantial height. Now, you need not produce a crystal ball to see the direction council is headed here with respect to the height bonus west of O Avenue. But west of O Avenue, I predict, regardless of what we do here, is not going to see a five-story building. I mean, maybe there are a couple of parcels that you could point to west of O Avenue besides the medical use overlay. But people are taking care of their houses, they're investing in their houses in those neighborhoods. I don't foresee a five-story building getting constructed west of O Avenue anytime soon, even if we allow, in our regs, for a five-story building to get constructed. East of O Avenue, yes, and we're aware of the property owned by the people who own Fidalgo Flats east of O Avenue that probably will get constructed near term. I'm okay with that because Commercial Avenue is the place for height. It's Highway 20. If there's going to be height anywhere in Anacortes, it ought to be Commercial Avenue. But the investment that people have made in their houses in the area west of O is substantial. People care for that neighborhood. They, they have a visceral sense of what that neighborhood is like. And despite the fact that on the ground, I don't foresee a five-story building, I don't think that we should, I don't think that we should provide the councils or the cities in primater on approval of a five-story building in that neighborhood. Moreover, just saying we're going to allow five stories west of O won't make it so. And so if we want to achieve housing, we need to do other measures. And it's the missing middle housing that is really going to make the difference in terms of how we accommodate more people, including the people who are already here during the day but have to leave Anacortes at night to drive someplace else. And that's also, by the way, what puts cars and trips on the road, is all of that commuting. So I don't think that we are, assuming we move forward with a, any kind of action that allows that 50 feet west of O, I don't think we're going to change the outcome. I do feel like that neighborhood will consider it a betrayal of them, and I don't think that's good for anybody. And at the end of the day, we cannot rely on it as solving our housing problem because I don't think it will. We need to do missing middle, we need to do human-scale allowances to get to more housing in that area and other parts of Anacortes. Now, we could just let the moratorium expire and not pursue changes to the open space requirement or the required number of units that need to be 600 square feet or less, but seriously, why not? We could get that done in a matter of weeks. That would enable more flexibility in design of five-story buildings where you want to allow them, better architecture. It would allow, it would provide and require smaller units, which is, as has been stated here a couple of times this evening, what it is we're trying to achieve because it is correlated with less expensive dwelling units. So I certainly advocate us pursuing that now rather than putting it on Mr. Meesmer or his successor's list for something to get done years from now because the development will occur before that process gets done. So let's, let's proceed with it now and, and also as a measure of dealing with this problem in a way other than simply letting it expire and walking away.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. If I understood what Mr. Walters said, I think he's, I think the tea leaves is pretty clear. Maybe not crystal clear, but let's just say the, I think the sentiment, at least from what I heard articulated here tonight, is that we will move forward. Now, whether that's modification of the increase, to increase the proposal to 35% of the units, which I think began to address part of the concerns of Ms. Moulton, there, and also your concerns and ours, but short of that, I don't hear any objection to moving forward or allowing the plan to, the moratorium to expire. I don't. So with that said, I move we, I'm not sure the appropriate link, no? Okay.
We, we just, I know you're, it sounds great. We could let the moratorium expire, but I think we kind of owe it to the public to, to affirmatively voice, at least for me, because I will go out and get the verbal rocks, and that's fine, that we verbally acknowledge that we're going to let the moratorium expire. So, Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, thank you for wording it so concisely, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, again, I think that we're here, we have to make a tough decision, recognizing what it means to the communities because I hear you. The reality is, we're juggling housing that we're desperately in need of, affordable housing, or at least smaller units, we're in desperately in need of. Cities across the country are crying for the very same thing, and we are no different than that. This is an opportunity for us. And, and so as that, if, I'm not sure of the appropriate motion to make on this, but I move that we allow the Planning Commission's recommendation to move forward as presented. And, or, Mr. Meesmer, if you would help me with the language on it, what I'm trying to say is that we allow it to move forward. And if it allows us a chance to increase the proposal to 35%, at some point, I would love for that to be brought on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I think appropriately, the council could make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to allow the moratorium to expire with no changes. And then if you wish to direct staff to work on a couple of the changes that Mr. Walter is proposing, we can, we can do that. I'm not going to guarantee it's going to get done in three weeks, but.
That's exactly the motion I'm putting forward. Thank you.
Second?
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to allow the moratorium to expire with the caveat to direct staff to present to council adjustments to include 35%, potential 35% additional square footage less than 600 feet. Okay. Any additional discussion or whether I butchered that motion?
Mayor Miller?
Okay. Somebody's going to help me with that. Ms. Cleland and Ms. Moulton?
Yeah. Thank you. You know, I know that there's a lot of folks in the, the audience and probably watching online and are quite disappointed with this outcome or the sentiment from council, but what I didn't articulate the first time as well is that, you know, there's always a concern that if we do hire building, larger buildings, more people will move here. More people are going to move here regardless because you move here if you can afford it. What I'm concerned with is the folks who already live here and making sure that they have an opportunity to be able to continue to live here and work here and, and be employed here. So to me, that is a really important thing that is conveyed. So with that being said.
Thank you. Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Cleland McGrath, and also I think Ms. Hubig said it most eloquently, our small-town charm is in our people, and if our people can't afford to be here, then we aren't the same at all. And I also want to concur with Mr. Walters. This isn't, there are still things that we need to do, and I want to continue to work on those now. So thank you, Mr. Meesmer, for all your work, and thanks to the community as well for yours.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
So the motion as proposed basically brings to an end the development regulation process that was kicked off by the moratorium. But per our public participation plan in our code, an alternative to that would be to move forward the amendments that I proposed to the open space requirement and to the requirement for 30% units to be less than 600 square feet. We can move that forward in this process if we don't just accept the Planning Commission's recommendation at this point and instead roll in that, hold some comment period, and then button it up. So the final ordinance would then, you know, a couple of weeks from now, say, we are amending the code to not change the dividing line because you're not inclined to do that, but to change the open space requirement and the required number of units for the density bonus. And that would be my preference because it doesn't require us to restart an entire process to pursue those changes, which could be months from now or years from now. We really don't have control over it if we abandon it now. It goes to staff, and it might go to staff other than those sitting in this room. So that's why I advocate us not doing precisely this motion, but instead directing staff to bring forward a proposal consistent with the consensus here apparently tonight, which is to modify the open space and number of 600-square-foot units for final adoption in a couple of weeks.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young, and then I think Ms. Cleland. Mr. Young?
Recognizing the point that Mr. Walters is making, it's, it's a very valid point. But the reality is, we kicked this can down the road for quite some time now. The due diligence that was done, not only by the Planning Commission, the voices that were heard by the people that came forward, the cries for additional housing and smaller units, I mean, we really have an issue, and it's not going to go away. So I, I think that if the challenge that Mr. Walters is speaking to is about the modification to increase the proposal to 35% of the units being small units, and I think he mentioned open space requirements, is there a way we can move this forward and then modify that later? I mean, because I think this will allow us to put, codify this point and put it behind us. We have, to exhaustion at times, gone over this. And it's not going to get any easier, it's a tough decision. Would you speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Young. A couple of things. I'm not going to be able to get an ordinance prepared and get it back before council in two weeks. It won't be until early March if we were to take Mr. Walters' approach at this. The council can, tends certainly take action on your motion in letting the moratorium drop and then have, have staff come back with the amendments to the code by ordinance at a later date. Now, as I said, can that happen in two weeks? No. Can that happen before the end of March? I think so.
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I, I would be inclined to be able to have at least a planning committee discussion because realistically, I don't know, I think Mr. Walters proposed 30%, right? There's 35% been, oh, it's just, huh? Okay. Well, to be perfectly honest, I think we should go back and discuss it, understand what Fidalgo Flats has done, and maybe you can get some insight to how they determine the percentage. Maybe it should be 50%. I mean, if this is really something we're trying to incentivize to get that fifth floor to go to 50 feet, let's, let's make it, you know, as big of a bang for this, this change for the neighborhood as possible.
Agreed.
So.
Right. And I think that if we go back to the Planning Commission and have that conversation with the community and with the Planning Commission, we can get in touch with makers and get some information from them as well.
So there is a motion and a second on the floor. And the motion, I believe, is to accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission and direct staff to work on proposals for a 30 or 35% less-than-600-square-foot bonus ability and open space requirements. Mr. Walters, are you going to help me with that one, then?
No, I think you captured that. I just want to be very blunt. If we do not take the opportunity in this process, which would be contrary to this motion, if we do not take the opportunity in this process to move those tweaks forward, projects will vest, and we will not achieve those tweaks. We will not amend the code to achieve those things this year and probably, maybe not even until the end of next year, assuming momentum continues to even pursue it. But more importantly, projects will vest before then. So if you want to see 50% small units required, people will rush in to submit their proposals before that goes into effect.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
So to Mr. Meesmer, does it make sense for us to, we're clear that the moratorium, we're going to allow the moratorium to go away and lapse. So how do we do, I don't know exactly how we do this to make it effective so we can make these changes.
Yeah. Ms. Cleland?
I mean, I think there was a request that we get on record to vote tonight, but we don't have to because it doesn't expire until April, correct?
Moratorium expires April 3rd, correct?
So we can say, hey, let's work on this. If you get it, if you're able to bring something back to us at the beginning of March, we can do it in tandem as Mr. Walters suggested versus kind of preemptively ending the moratorium and not addressing some of the changes that would make a lot of sense.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Well, I hear that point, and it's a very rational point. What hadn't been made clear to me is what prevents us from making these adjustments. I think Mr. Walters' assertion was that we may not ever get to it. What prevents us from getting to it, other than us and what we need to get done? I, I don't understand that. So if we can address, as we are addressing these issues now, I think that the process of getting these modifications would just be the same due diligence we would do in any other circumstance. So I'm not clear on that.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
To answer the question, the process would be different. So if we adopt this motion tonight, this development regulation process ends, and then we would have to restart. Restart means we are starting from scratch. So there's a new public comment period, there's a public hearing before the Planning Commission, there's a 60-day notice to commerce, there's, there's much more process associated with a restart. So that, that's the reason I advocate integrating that into this process such that we can just finish it up as part of this process rather than doing that complete reboot of the process.
If I might, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Meesmer.
So it's entirely possible that I could get an ordinance number and perhaps have something developed by ordinance within the next few weeks and then potentially come back to the council March 6th. And at that point, then have, we could address it as a public hearing before the city council with some changes that Mr. Walters suggests, potentially have this done by the end of March. It's, it's, it skips the Planning Commission process and that lengthy community input at that point. And so, you know, if we go from 25% to 30% of units at not more than 600 square foot, I don't know that that's a huge change, but going to 50% would be a huge change. And that's where, in my opinion, I would like to see more public comment on that. What we haven't seen at the Planning Commission level up to date is a conversation on the change, the percentage of units or the open space change, I think. And so those would be the only two items that would be different from what the Planning Commission has already seen. And we could certainly do that here. The legislative requirements in our code allows for that. I could, I could, we could get a notice in the papers, a public comment accepted, get that in the February 15th paper, schedule it for the March 6th. I could get an ordinance, Mr. Walters could help us write that ordinance, bring it back March 6th.
But let me see if I can.
But let me see if I can understand Mr. Walters, though. I think the point that he's making is if we, if you modify the motion perhaps right now, the concern I have is we haven't settled, I'm not sure if we've settled on 35 percent or 30 percent, and make sure that the open space, eliminate the requirement for open spaces. Is that what you're trying to do, Mr. Walters, is move, make an amendment to the motion on the table?
Yes. So I would, as an alternative to the motion on the table, I would propose the following, that we simply direct staff to bring us back a proposal, most of which I've already written here, that would amend the open space requirement as I described. And because there's a suggestion of doing 50 percent small unit, including a range of 30 to 50 percent, we could take comment on the range of 30 to 50 percent and then adopt any number within that range. That's what's contemplated by our public participation code, the legislative provisions in Title 19. The missing bit would be to not accept the Planning Commission's recommendation as of yet. We would do that after staff bring forward ordinance text and hold a comment period to make these modifications. And I would also point out that, no, we didn't take public comment on the particularities of tweaking the open space requirement. What we did take public comment on, it was a concept on the list of concepts for discussion, was actually beyond that. It was prohibiting roof decks. So there was an opportunity to comment on the gist of it, just the mechanics of it are changing the open space requirement. So I would still advocate taking public comment as part of that process, but it would be a much, much abbreviated process compared to restarting later.
Mr. Young?
Yes. I'm okay with part of that. The struggle I have is that, you know, we've, I mean, at least my inference from the conversation is that, you know, the two things that we were trying to negotiate at some point and make some decision on as council is the increase, the percentage of small unit size, and then the open space requirements. So, you know, for me, the conversation is not about what we've already, the other items, because in effect, I would assume we have, we are agreeing at least on those things. So the things that would come back before council for discussion, if we take Mr. Walters' approach, are those two things, not the whole thing to rehash all over again, to go back through, because none of that's going to change. The only thing that we're trying to do as council is figure out how we maximize the use of space to provide the greatest benefit for the people who want to stay and live here. So my concern is, in going forward, how do we address those two things, not the entire thing again? That would be a problem for me. Thank you.
Okay. Well, there is a motion and a second on the table, and I think I understand, I think council understands what it is, and I'd like to call for a vote. Okay. The motion is by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter to accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission and to direct staff to bring back to council a range of options of a percentage from 30 to 50 with the percentage of those for 600 square feet or less and the prohibition of open space.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Doesn't that negate what Mr. Walters presented as a motion, so we can do it all at one, I mean, so we can do it as one?
Well, I just have one motion on the table right now.
Okay. I think he presented an amended one that we might want to hear again.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Let me present an amendment to that motion. I propose that we do something slightly different than that motion, and so I would offer an amendment to that motion to delete the language about accepting the Planning Commission recommendation at this moment. I certainly understand that you were going to do that in the future. But then the remainder of the motion would simply read, "To direct staff to bring back these code amendments that we could implement prior to expiration of the moratorium."
Second?
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to delete the language, accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then direct staff to bring back to council prior to the expiration of the moratorium. I think I added that unnecessarily. The 600-square-foot percentage and the open space requirements. All right. So we got to take action on this motion first. Mr. Franciac, did you capture that? And can you take the vote, please?
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Walters or Mr. Young?
We're on the, we're on Mr. Walters' motion, second by Ms. Moulton.
And Mr. Walters is basically the same as Mr. Young's, just without the moratorium expiring.
And without accepting, no, he didn't say, he's just deleting the recommendation from the Planning Commission from that motion.
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. And we still do have the motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter. If I remember my Roberts rules, we've modified that motion. Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
To address Mr. Young's earlier concern, when we open a new public comment period on the proposed amendments, we could limit the comment period to just the proposed amendments, not all the issues surrounding the topic.
All right. Thank you for, Mr. Young?
No, I, you know, it, my role as a city councilman is to bring forward the best solutions, I think, even if it seems impossible. That's why I was elected. I really appreciate a vigorous discussion sometimes, and, you know, sometimes you win some, sometimes you lose some, but I think in what Mr. Walters just brought forward, I like it, and I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to item D, which is...
Mayor Miller? I think we do need to take a vote on that directing staff to bring us back the amendments.
Did we not do that? Okay. Okay. We just, so we do need to take a vote on the motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter that directs staff to bring back to council the ranges as discussed previously.
For adoption prior to...
For adoption prior to the expiration of the moratorium. Okay.
Okay. No, I'm just curious, to Mr. Walters' point, and limit the discussion to these items.
Correct.
Okay. Right. I'm okay with that.
Okay. So that's the amended motion now, the Young-Carter motion and second.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Franciac, could you take a vote on that one, please?
Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for helping me out. Get through that one and on to item 8D, ordinance 4039, amending the table in section 10.08.030 to reduce speed limits in certain areas, and I think Mr. Hash has already made his way up.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, council.
Means you've read the, you've read the packet.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, here audience, Henry Hash, Public Works. I thought after this wonderful discussion, you need an easy item. And this is really all about consistency and improving safety for our bicycles and pedestrians. On Oak Avenue, which is really a state road, Washita has changed the speed limit from 40 to 30. We just want to be consistent, so we want to make sure we change our hours to 30. The other one is A Avenue. I noticed that A Avenue is the only street, city-owned street, that has a 40 mile-per-hour speed limit, and we want to change that to 30, so we will be consistent with everything else. That's all.
So as much as I did want to accept Mr. Walters' motion, this is, does have an asterisk for public comment, and maybe somebody hung around just for this topic. Okay. Checking, you'd like to comment on the speed limit on the ordinance 4039? 4039? You want to comment on it? Yep. Okay. Come on up. And I think you know the drill.
My biggest challenge is the computer, this mic.
Yeah, you can bend it all the way down. It won't, you won't hurt it.
I want to make a proposal that M Avenue...
Do you have it, do you have the microphone on?
Don't I?
Yeah, just a little closer.
I would like to have, consider, I would like the council to consider putting M Avenue on that list of reducing the speed. M Avenue has had a number of car-to-car accidents, hit-and-runs, and just recently in December, we had a pedestrian hit by a vehicle traveling on M Avenue. We have M Avenue, we have two elementary schools, the hospital, we have a bike lane on the south lane, and we have no bike lane on the north line, lane, northbound traffic, excuse me. It's very confusing to bicyclist. The travel lane is narrower than other lanes in the city of Anacortes. We have semis driving down M Avenue, and we have very high speeds on M Avenue. We have cars parked on M Avenue whose mirrors have been wiped out by passing large vehicles. We have bicyclists that are electric bikes that are traveling faster than the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, and we have handicapped people who are using the bike lane with their scooters. I would like to see M Avenue included with the reduced speed from 25 to 20. We have a reduced speed on K Avenue that's 20 miles an hour, and that, it does not have a bike lane other than in the travel lane. But we have a lot of traffic on M Avenue, and the speed limit is very high for the amount of traffic that's on that lane, the types of vehicles that are traveling on that lane, on that street, and the number of pedestrians that we have also on that street. And I think we need, we've had a lot of misfortune there, so I'd like you to consider adding M.
Okay. Thank you. We won't be able to add that to this ordinance tonight, but just for the public's information, we typically take those kind of inputs to the Traffic Safety Committee, which I know there's a couple of members on that one, and we'll take a look at that. So Mr. Ha, actually, it's over, I think it's over to council now.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I want to, first of all, address the M Avenue concern. I think that's worthy of discussion. As a general matter, and that applies to this ordinance as well, we ought to be careful expecting that changing the law regarding the speed limit will result in a lower speed. And traffic engineers will tell you that speed limits are supposed to be set based on people's expectation for how safe it is to drive at that particular speed, or at least the 85th percentile of them. So really, what we need to do to achieve lower speeds is generally to modify the roadway. And we've done some of that work on M Avenue through paint, and maybe more could be done. But I would certainly be open, at least to the concept, between the school zones, maybe beyond that, to the hospital, to look at lowering the speed limit or trying to achieve a lower speed limit through other modifications to the roadway. The other thing I want to point out about this ordinance is how easy it is to change two roads by insertion of rows in the table. Because the code is laid out as a table, we can just have two lines here that say, "Add these two rows," and we're ready to go. And it's not an overwhelming task to write up the code change. So I think that that's worthy of keeping in mind as we rewrite other sections of the code. A Avenue, south, city line north of 37th Street, I guess, sure, maybe we shouldn't have any 40 mile-an-hour roads inside the city limits, but it is 40 miles an hour right after the city limits, so it is consistent now with the speed limit outside. So I'm somewhat less sold on that, except it's an urban area because it's in the city, so maybe it should be 30. Of course, one half of it is forest lands. So anyway, given all that, I'm okay with moving this forward on the recommendation of Public Works now. So I move approval of ordinance 4039 as presented.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve ordinance 4039. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. We have one more item tonight. This is a discussion item. Other business, item 8E, Molly Lane property purchase, and probably a better descriptor would be Molly Lane Fire Station 3 purchase. Mr. Miesmer?
One last time at the podium, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers in the audience. So staff have been working with third-party consultants to complete the feasibility work on the 9029 Molly Lane property, which is the existing fire station. The appraisal has been completed, and the valuation came in above the agreed purchase price by about, I think it was about $2,000. Third-party inspection was completed, as well as our building official and myself and the fire chief visiting the building and doing an onsite inspection. The inspection report indicates that there are a couple of roof leaks, that the GFI outlets, a couple of them are wired wrong, and those will need to be rewired. We also found that the fire alarm system for 9029 Molly Lane is connected to the fire alarm system at 9025 Molly Lane. So essentially, what needs to happen is, there needs to be a new panel inserted in the, in the 9025 Molly Lane, and then again, the roof repairs. We've also completed the Phase 1 environmental, and essentially, it is, based on the report, it is reasonable and prudent to believe that the risk of contamination at the site is so minimal that no further investigation is warranted. The approximate repair cost for the roof is right around $9,800, and the fire alarm system is right around $8,000, so a total of about, comes out to about $18,000 for the repair and for the fire alarm system. With that, I would ask that the council make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a modification to the purchase and sale regarding the repairs that are necessary for the building.
Questions or motions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. We have one more item tonight. This is a discussion item. Other business, item 8E, Molly Lane property purchase, and probably a better descriptor would be Molly Lane Fire Station 3 purchase. Mr. Miesmer?
One last time at the podium, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers in the audience. So staff have been working with third-party consultants to complete the feasibility work on the 9029 Molly Lane property, which is the existing fire station. The appraisal has been completed, and the valuation came in above the agreed purchase price by about, I think it was about $2,000. Third-party inspection was completed, as well as our building official and myself and the fire chief visiting the building and doing an onsite inspection. The inspection report indicates that there are a couple of roof leaks, that the GFI outlets, a couple of them are wired wrong, and those will need to be rewired. We also found that the fire alarm system for 9029 Molly Lane is connected to the fire alarm system at 9025 Molly Lane. So essentially, what needs to happen is, there needs to be a new panel inserted in the, in the 9025 Molly Lane, and then again, the roof repairs. We've also completed the Phase 1 environmental, and essentially, it is, based on the report, it is reasonable and prudent to believe that the risk of contamination at the site is so minimal that no further investigation is warranted. The approximate repair cost for the roof is right around $9,800, and the fire alarm system is right around $8,000, so a total of about, comes out to about $18,000 for the repair and for the fire alarm system.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to adjust the purchase and sale price by $18,000 to 9029 Molly Lane. Any additional discussion? Ms. Cleveland.
I guess, I'm a little confused. Are we suggesting we're going to raise the purchase price so that we can do those modifications prior to closing?
No.
Okay.
I left that out, I guess, of the motion, but it would be a downward.
But that's, I'm a little, I guess, since we haven't seen the purchase and sale agreement, it's a little confusing.
So the idea is, I have been in contact with the owner, the owner has indicated that they will be taking care of some of these things before closing, and so I think that our expectation is that, working with Ms. Swedham City Attorney in negotiation, in negotiating with the owner, just how much of this they're going to do, how much they might reduce the actual sale price.
Yeah, maybe the better motion would have been to authorize the $18,000 of negotiation from the purchase and sale price of 1.853 million.
Agreed.
Yeah, or, yes, to approve the, you, approve the mayor to negotiate the scope of work as been acknowledged by the, the bids you've received, right?
Correct.
To do as needed to move forward to, towards the closure of, to closing on the property. That's kind of what I was thinking more of, but I didn't articulate that as well.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Ms. Swedham, hello, thank you.
Hello, if I might, yeah, so the purchase and sale agreement was on the CBA forms that were presented to council previously, and the only amendment that was made was to peel out one of the two buildings. So it's on that standard CBA form for a commercial purchase and sale agreement, and so I think what we're, I mean, that, that, that price has been authorized by council, and so that, that contract has been signed by the mayor, and so what we're looking at is that as an amendment to the contract has to be executed with the same authority that the original contract was. And so I think your request that the mayor be authorized by council to negotiate the resolution of completing those repairs, whether that be by the seller doing those repairs himself, or that being a reduction in the sales price, I think accomplishes the goal. If that's helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Swedham.
Is there any chance that helps in amended motion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, let me restate that motion then. Move to authorize the mayor to amend the purchase and sale agreement for 9029, yes, Molly Lane, in an amount up to $18,000 to. Anybody want to fill the, and the, this is why there's a blank on the form for the recommended motion, Mr. Meesmer.
So maybe it's to address.
To address the issues identified during the inspection.
Inspection and feasibility.
Yeah, nice. And I still want to see a copy of the contract.
Second.
Okay, so, hold on, I do have a motion, a second, I do have to address that first. I'll remember, a motion by Mr. Walters, an amended motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to authorize the mayor to address the, dang it, now I forgot, to amend the contract to address the issues found during the inspection, the amount of $18,000. Man, I did it. So, any additional discussion? Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Forgive me, I, did we already authorize the price, the purchase price of the purchase and sale agreement?
Okay, yeah, I probably should have done a little better summary of, you know, the original purchase price was 2.5, 2.6 million dollars. The portion of this, the 9029, which that was the authorized price, but we didn't get that deal, the new owner offered a prorated price at that amount, and the prorated price is 1.853 million, and that is the, that is the contract that's there, and that was the, what you saw in the appraisal that was sent to council. So there is a motion and, and a second. Mr. Franciac, would you call for the vote, please?
Can I say one more thing?
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
So I guess, I have a hard time understanding when it's a different, if it's a different seller and it's, it's only one parcel instead of two parcels. I think in the future, this would, it'd be good to have it come back to council for a new approval, since, yes, it's the same, it's the same property, but now it's only half the property.
Yeah.
Then, it was two parcels, two parcels, now we're only buying one parcel, which is great, because we didn't need the other parcel, but it's a little confusing to assume that the approval for the original purchase and sale agreement with one seller then lends itself to do the second transaction, to do a subsequent transaction. So that's, I think, why it's a little confusing, because we haven't had that, that new purchase price, or the offer, come to council or discussed at council, so.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been great to have the policy by council that we brought to council three different times.
No, that, I don't think that has, that's regardless, but what I, I would still say, before you interrupted me, that it's a fantastic opportunity for us to still purchase this property, and is saving money we didn't ever spend, but thank goodness, it's kind of off the table. I just, it got a little, it got a little muddy, and I think it's a little muddy for the public to understand what, what transpired, so that's all I wanted to say.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think I generally concur with Ms. Cleo McGrath. We could add to our motion a ratification of the underlying purchase and sale agreement. True, but, or not. I don't know if you want the Roberts rules exercise either, but.
Well, I've got a motion, I've got a motion and a second on the table, and I would like to call for the vote.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for the long night of work, appreciate it. Have a good night.